I miss a little bit, not much.
Yeah.
My daughter's going into an internship at AU. Um, I'm not sure, because she's going to get her, she's a senior. What she's going to do as far as what she's going to be doing.
She's going to start.
Well, thank you so much.
Yes ma'am. Yes ma'am. Yes ma'am. Okay, thank you.
Oh yeah, yeah, I got it.
And my, uh, son is Dr. Law.
Yeah.
So we gave him a bunch of things. And work up really well, so a lot of things. Well, so my boy's son's a doctor. This will be their second child. Missed.
Okay, it is seven sixteen, I would entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So move.
Motion's been made by Vice Chairman Talbert.
Second.
Seconded by, uh, Councilman Campbell, is there any discussion? None, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, we are out of executive session. The next item on the agenda is, uh, consideration of approval of Resolution Number Twenty, Twenty-One, eleven thirty-six. And, and the next four are all somewhat connected, but it's a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement by, between Edgefield County, South Carolina, and a company known to the county as Project Light, acting for itself, one or more affiliates, and/or other products, sponsors collectively the company pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities in the county. The project benefits, the benefits of a multi-county industrial or business park to be made available to the company, and the project, certain special revenue source credits in connection with the project and other matters related thereto. I would just ask, uh, our county administrator if he would like to explain that. It's Exhibit Number Eight.
What, what I'm going to do is talk about the next four items, so that way you don't have to keep coming back to me. Uh, the first item is a resolution. It's going to be saying that you resolve to enter into an agreement for a fee in lieu. Just from a historical standpoint, when Generac came in, there was a fee in lieu. Taxes are at eleven and a half percent for industry, with a fee in lieu generally you go down to six percent. Uh, but it's a negotiated, uh, settlement as to what the fee in lieu would be based on that investment. We're looking at an investment of probably twenty to thirty million dollars with, uh, this project. Uh, so if you pass the resolution, again, it allows you then to enter into this fee in lieu agreement. Later on, the next item after that is going to be the actual fee in lieu and approving it on first reading. Then you have two multi-county parks. One is for the same type of project with Aiken County, saying that we're establishing this project in Aiken County, and to get a tax break with the state government, we use a multi-county, uh, incentive with one percent of that going to Edgefield County. Our Project Light, we're saying for our investment of twenty to thirty million dollars, that multi-county park, we're using Aiken County as our partner, and one percent of ours is going to go to Aiken County. So it's a swapping back and forth, uh, again, for tax purposes. So that's how the four items all relate to one another. Again, a resolution that allows you go to first reading for the actual fee in lieu. And then the next two items after that are the multi-county park, both for Aiken County and for Edgefield.
Excellent. I would ask council if there's any questions for the administrator. All right, see none, uh, I would entertain a motion of approval of Resolution Number Twenty, Twenty-One, eleven thirty-six.
So move.
Motion's been made by Councilman Campbell, seconded by Dr. Kenyon. Is there any discussion? I'd see none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, very similar, consider, I mean, it's already been described, consideration of approval of first reading of ordinance Number Twenty, Twenty-One, seven eighty-eight. Uh, a fee in lieu, uh, of tax and incentive agreement between Edgefield County and, uh, a company known as Project Light. I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number Twenty, Twenty-One, seven eighty-eight.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made by Vice Chairman Talbert.
Second.
Seconded by, uh, Councilman Campbell. Is there any discussion? I'd see none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That ordinance passes unanimously. Next item is ordinance Number Twenty, Twenty-One, seven eighty-six. Uh, similar, just, just switching counties there. An ordinance authorizing the development of a jointly owned and operated industrial business park in conjunction with Aiken County, such industrial business parks, uh, to be geographically located in Aiken County and established pursuant to Section Four, One, One Seventy of the Code of Laws of South Carolina. Um, I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number Twenty, Twenty-One, seven eighty-six. Motion's been made by Dr. Kenyon.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chairman Talbert, is there any discussion? I'd see none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That ordinance passes unanimously. Final ordinance on this subject is ordinance Number Twenty, Twenty-One, seven eighty-seven. Um, an ordinance authorizing the development of a jointly owned and operated industrial business park in conjunction with Aiken County, such industrial business park, this one to be located in Edgefield County, and established pursuant to Section Four, One, One Seventy of the Code of Laws of South Carolina. I would entertain a motion to, uh, approve first reading of ordinance Number Twenty, Twenty-One, seven eighty-seven.
So move.
Motion's been made by, uh, Councilman Campbell, seconded by Dr. Kenyon. Is there any discussion? All right, see none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That ordinance passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is consideration of approval of first reading of ordinance Number Twenty, Twenty-One, seven eighty-nine, an ordinance to amend Chapter Twenty-four, One Seventy-four of the Edgefield County Land Ordinance. This is Exhibit Number Seven, and I would ask the county administrator if he would like to explain this.
At the last planning commission meeting, a project came forward that wanted to put a large number of lots without water, domestic water or community water, and without sewer. So all of the properties would be on wells and on septic tanks. A lot of discussion, uh, happened at that meeting concerning that, uh, especially by some of the planning commission members where they've had well problems in the past. Again, when you get a number of homes with wells, and they're all drawing down that, in a very similar aquifer, uh, that water table could, uh, decrease rapidly. And so, after hearing that discussion, I had a meeting with the staff concerning it, and we're asking council to consider the ordinance you have before you. If you approve it on first reading tonight, it will then go back to the planning commission for their review and recommendation. So even though they discussed this, they did not, uh, have this before them to vote on at their meeting. We put within this ordinance that stated that if a piece of property did not have sewer or water, that they would have to have a minimum one half acre, you know, one acre sized lot. So again, no water, no sewer, uh, one acre lot, and if you had water but no sewer, so you just had septic tanks out there, that'd be a half acre. The fact of the matter is, wells and septic fields are all governed by DHEC. So we can't govern whether they'll get approval for water or approval for sewer. But we can, as a body, govern the minimum sized lots that you may have within a development. So they're, we're looking at it at a minimum sized lot. This is one of the things that will have to be at some point in time looked at within our ordinances. You know, if we're going to try to maintain the, uh, rural aesthetic, uh, portion of our county, uh, we need to be very concerned about how a number of septic fields, number of wells, and what that will do to the environment. So this is a start. Uh, you will see within the ordinance that we are putting a, I'll call it a sunset rule in here, it states in, at the very end, under item Number Six, it says the ordinance shall become effective upon adoption on third reading by council, and shall terminate one year from its adoption. The reason we have that in there, and it, and it doesn't have to be in there, but we felt we really want to get this settled within a one-year period of time. That, that current LMO we have, we're going to talk about that in just a few minutes, um, that even on our existing ordinances, is one half an acre, is one acre really the right sized lots? It may change. It might be a little less or a little bit more, uh, in the future as we go forward. So again, we're saying one year, that doesn't mean after one year, if we still haven't passed all the ordinances that we need, we could go ahead and extend that. If something gets approved within the, one year, then this would go away because that'll be adopted within the regulations. So again, tonight, we're asking you to approve first reading of an ordinance that would require a minimum lot size of one half acre for water but no sewer, and one acre if it had no water or no sewer available.
I have a question.
Dr. Kenyon.
So right now, you're saying we do not have our ordinance in place?
That's correct.
Okay. From my understanding, I think I was at that, that meeting, this the guy that wants to put seventy-seven houses, it's on Nicholson Road.
That's correct.
Half Edgefield, half Aiken County. Okay. I just want to get a clear, uh, uh, understanding, I don't know how this is going to work. But DHEC used to say that a well has to be at least one hundred feet from the septic tank, am I right?
Right.
Okay, is that still in the same room?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, one hundred feet, and everybody must have a septic tank and a well, am I right?
Mm-hmm. In, in that one particular area that we're talking about. But this, this ordinance, again, will apply to an entire county, not just that, you know, so yes, think that one area, but think broadly on the whole entire county.
Okay, and I'm looking at the half acres lot for area, I'm looking, I'm reading. I just don't see, me personally, how, how we going to get the seventy-seven houses on Nicholson Road? I, 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 I been down there, I, I had, I, Dean, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think that's our area, because I think we kind of kids. My mind can't, I'm a visual.
Yeah, so again, if, if, if you approve this tonight, and we say it's one acre in that area, then there's, there, they could not put all those lots in there. Currently, though, they don't even need a half an acre to be able to do that.
So can I make a, two, two quick things? One, this is an example of why we need ordinances in place to protect ourselves. And, and two, currently, the way that that, and I understand this is for the whole county, where utilities do not exist. Um, but in, in this scenario that she's talking about, they could apply for that scenario.
Absolutely.
And DHEC potentially could approve it or could deny it, but we don't have anything in place currently to protect the residents, and this would help protect them.
This right here.
Not just, not, not just Nicholson, but countywide, where utilities are not available.
And, and Dr. Kenyon, this is just a start. You know, um, and, and you may come back and say, half an acre's too much or too little. Um, or the planning commission may want to change the size of this. But it was our attempt, and we looked at other areas in the state to see, is a half acre seem to be the right size? Should it be three quarters of an acre, should be an acre? Right now, DHEC, uh, could very easily say a third of an acre is fine. With, uh, giving an example, where I live in my subdivision, there's probably a hundred and fifty homes, they're range anywhere from about a quarter of an acre to three quarters of an acre. Um, we're on domestic water, we're not on wells, we're on domestic water, but we're all on septic tanks. And it, but it perks very well. So that perking allowed them to go ahead and put septic in. But if you pass this night, uh, the minimum would be a half acre that you would be stating, with city water.
Half acre where water is available.
Water's available.
A full acre where neither county water or county sewer is available.
Okay, and so, in this, okay, I just want to, so you, you remember when the young lady came up to speak, she said she had a well, right? Four hundred, what, feet? Was that, did she say, four hundred, whatever? Her well was pumped out, I believe. So what would that, what would this here, ha, when does it be, have a serious effect on her area living on Nicholson Road, already having a septic tank that she got to pump out? What would, I'm, I'm trying to see it, how, how would this hurt, when does hurt her?
This would help.
Or this would help her?
Yeah, because right now, we do not have any regulations on the lot size with no water or sewer. They could, they could, if planning commission approved it, they could have a third of an acre lot in that area. And therefore, the cone of influence of all these wells would just start drawing down that water table to a much lower level. This is trying to go ahead and attempt to rectify what possibly could happen if an area gets overused without water or sewer.
Any other comments for the administrator? Go ahead, Doc, um, Cam.
Couple of questions. Um, first, I'm, I think this is necessary, so I'm glad we're doing this, but some, some very specific questions like, you know, one acre, why not one point five, why not two, why not three? What's the, I'm trying to see the magic of one acre, for example.
There, there was no magic behind it, other than we looked in a couple other counties that had this. But this is again why we're asking you to approve this on first reading. Let it go back to the planning commission next week, and let them review it. They may go ahead and say, one and a half. They may say three quarters, we, I don't know. But we wanted to get something before council and get this moving, a, and not wait. We could have waited and said, let them, uh, do this at their May meeting, and then you wouldn't get first reading until June. Uh, so this gives you an opportunity to pass it, send it back, get the recommendation, and then you would have second reading.
Dean, just to let council know, is, um, after the planning commission meeting, a couple of weeks ago, Vice Chairman Talbert and I met with Mr. Burt, Kevin, and Doc. And I think generally speaking, the planning commission makes these recommendations and we approve, but we talked about, we wanted to make this recommendation for them to talk about and bring back to us. And, and we talked about doing it both ways, letting, letting them talk about it in, in May, and bringing to us in June for the first reading, but we thought this was faster by us initiating the discussion, county council initiating it. And I think going forward, we can continue to do that, right? If we see other ordinances that we need to do, we don't have to wait on the.
I, I, I did this frequently before in other places.
Um, but typically, we have waited for the planning commission to come to us, so.
And a couple of the questions, please. Um, so this is on paved roads, what about unpaved?
Again, we could take a look at that, uh, but it, subdividing property on an unpaved road is a whole lot different than on a paved road.
And assuming we pass this tonight, does the planning commission take it up at their meeting this week?
Next week.
I mean, next week?
Yes.
That would take it up? So it would come back to us theoretically in?
In June, on second reading.
And part of this, part of what we're passing tonight says that the ordinance will be effective after advertisement for the public hearing. Does that mean the planning commission's public hearing or our public hearing?
I'll let Andrew.
I, I believe that's our public hearing, this is our.
That's what I would say.
Ordinance.
That, that would have been my answer, too.
So, okay, if we plan, pass this tonight, my, I think my only question would be, why we couldn't state it, that we are recommending require a minimum of whatever? You know, like, they got a minimum of a half acre lot for area, which I don't prove of, but I'm just, you know, I'm saying, what, where did that figure, where did that come from? Half acre lots of area? And those without commu- community water and sewer would require a minimum of one acre, they came up with that.
Yeah, that half an acre and one acre came from Doc Hart and Kevin Singletary, uh, after discussing that with them at that meeting that the chairman and vice chairman were at with the chairman of the planning commission. And where they got that after the meeting was, they did talk to some other folks across the state, they did talk to DHEC about it, they talked to the Edgefield County Water and Sewer Authority, uh, to get some of their thoughts and opinions concerning what is written here tonight before you.
And so now, if this right here, okay, if we pass tonight, and this go to, I just want to understand, and this goes to planning commission, and they going to send it back to us? If we don't like it, we change it?
That is correct. So, the planning commission, um, by state law, they're a recommending body. So they, they will take a look at what we have here, they will make a recommendation to council. Council could always make changes to whatever you receive from the planning commission.
All right, I would.
Well, I would like, I would like to say, I knew out there where I live, when I bought my property out there some years ago, and it re, it was required that us have at least an acre before we can build on it. So, you know, what, what did all this come out with the half acre?
When you built, you, you don't have water or sewer where you were, correct?
I have water, but I didn't have water at, at first. I didn't have, I was on the well and the septic tank.
And what year did you build?
Forty-eight years ago. Because I couldn't tell what year.
It's like yesterday.
That been my oldest son was born, yeah, forty-eight years ago. And then the house next to us, they have, it was two, two houses next to us, and they on a half acre. And when I did, when I dug my well, I drained their well, two of them. And, and I, I wouldn't want that to happen, you know? I wouldn't want that to happen here. And I said, I said I make mention because the two houses right beside me, they would be a well year before we bought land there. So all the other land in there requires a acre. This half acre here, this half acre, you couldn't hardly put a decent, anything on it, you know?
So future ordinances, not this ordinance, but, but future ordinances that we could propose, and, and I'm not going to get the vocabulary correct, but could, for developers now, could require studies on aquifer tables, correct?
Uh, you, you can, but.
On major subdivisions.
We, we just did an aquifer study in Saluda County when I, working with, uh, Ridge Spring. And just in a, about a s, eight mile radius, aquifers ranged from a hundred feet in one area to several hundred feet in another area. I mean, it's just going to change, and because of the rock, uh, lenses that we have, there's water in some of these areas, um, that you could get, and it recovers, but it recovers very slowly. So again, if too many people are, are into those areas, wells have a much tougher time recovering. If you go further south, you get into more of the sand lenses, those aquifers have a much better chance of recovering. For instance, Edgefield County Water and Sewer Authority does not have any wells. They get all their water from the Savannah River. And one of the reasons they don't have any wells is because it is very difficult to find a aquifer that will produce the amount of water they need. You go further south into Aiken, and they have a couple of wells, and each one of them produces five million gallons a day. But they were able to get that because of the location. So it just varies from location to location. This is first stab at it, folks. Uh, you know, this may not be the end, but we felt like we needed to go ahead and, and get started on something. And just going back to the comprehensive plan, going back to the ordinances that we have currently in place, again, the LMO is not in place, that's just a draft, it's out there. The comprehensive plan and the ordinances were never intended to be cast in stone. Planning commission and the council should on a regular basis, as changes are necessary, they need to go ahead and bring those changes forward to council, uh, to meet new needs, uh, new concerns, new issues that are coming up within the county. So even once you pass that comprehensive plan and the new ordinances, you should be looking, not, not physically looking for something to happen, but you need to be aware that there are going to be changes. And it shouldn't be that every ten years, you just make these great massive changes. Changes should be taking place a little at a time, so that when you get to that tenth year, it, it's really a minor change in updates that you're going to have, not a major, major. And our ordinance. And our ordinances were rewritten basically in 2012. And I know that for a fact, because I'm the one that wrote them. And, but I don't think hardly any changes happened between 2012 and currently in 2021. So that's why we're going through the angst right now, because no changes were made. So this is what we're proposing, to start making some incremental changes as we see the need, knowing that there's going to be some major changes this summer after we have our small group meetings. So we have our small group meetings, we gather all that information together, go back to the planning commission. My goal would be that July, August, September, we start going through the current ordinances we have, see what needs to change. Do we stay with the LMO? Do we not stay with the LMO? We'll talk about that in a little while. And then hopefully have a public hearing later this fall at the planning commission, then sending it on to you sometime, hopefully this year, so that you could go ahead after three readings and come up with this new plan. That, that's the goal. But this came up at the last planning commission meeting. We just said, we really need to do something now, not wait till the end of the year.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number 2021789. And I will make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made by myself, seconded by Councilman Campbell, to approve first reading of ordinance number 2021789. Is there any further discussion? See, none, all in favor? Please signify by raising your hand. Ordinance passed unanimously. Did, did you raise your?
Yes, unanimously.
I'm sorry, did everyone raise their hand?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Motion passes unanimously. I think I missed something there. Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion of a recommendation by the planning commission to remove the current LMO draft from consideration. And I would ask the administrator if there's anything he would like to say about that.
I, I could probably talk for a long time on this issue, but just to make it very brief, there's a lot of people that I've talked to in my short time here that have a lot of opinions on the LMO that we have. And I'm not saying it needs to be tossed out completely, not saying that we should just modify it or what we need to do. That's a discussion that we'll be having this summer. I like to reserve judgment until we have all these small group meetings and hear from the public. But because there's been so much talk and discussion of, well, a new LMO says such and such, so therefore we should be doing that. Well, no, the existing ordinances that are in place is the rule of law until, is the rule of law until we decide differently. So the planning commission said, let's go ahead and just push it out of the way. And so that's before your consideration tonight. I didn't know how we wanted to go about discussing this, because it's kind of like, you have a few choices. You could just table this until the end of the summer, or you could go ahead and say, we're going to ignore the draft that we have out there, which essentially, because it's not law yet, we are ignoring it. We could modify it, or we could go ahead and start from scratch, you know? And we've heard different opinions about all those things. So this is council to discuss where and what you want to do with the LMO with the recommendation from the planning commission that we remove it from consideration.
Before I open up to council, my understanding is this is not something that we have to vote on. I mean, we can just discuss it and.
You could table it, discuss it.
Table it, discuss it.
Or whatever you want to.
Or we could choose to vote on it, I guess, but it is their recommendation to work incrementally after studying the current draft. And so I would just open it up to see if there's any discussion that council would like to have on this recommendation from the planning commission. Mr. Campbell, go ahead, Vice Chairman Talbert.
I would like to say, I know we've been talking about this for a long time, and if the planning commission recommend to we to remove it, I definitely would like to bother their plans, you know, until we can get something better.
Okay.
That's, that's my two cent on it, you know?
Okay. Mr. Campbell?
So several things. First, I've, I've had at least two calls from constituents who were, who were confused about this, because the way it's been presented by the planning commission, and now the way we have presented it tonight, they called me and said, oh, so the LMO is dead. We're not doing an LMO at all, period. It wasn't a question, it was a, we aren't, that's good. I'm like, no, wait a minute, that's not what this is. There will be an LMO.
Yeah.
Just not this one. And, and so along those lines, I guess my personal feeling is there's no action for us to take, because the planning commission is going to deliver a document to us that's called LMO. Rather we say tonight, it's dead, put a stake in it, or we love it, it doesn't matter. They're going to give us a document. And that's what's going to carry the day for the, the five of us up here, and of course, the constituents and, and with their input. So, let me just, see if I can say it this way. I'm fine with removing the current LMO draft from consideration, if that's what we all want to call it. But I think we need to be transparent with citizens here. That's not the reality of what will likely happen. So, so let me say first, everybody needs to remember that about half the LMO is current ordinances. It's including zoning ordinances. So that's not going away. It's there right now, it's been there for 20 years, the zoning, by the way. So that's not going away, so that's in the LMO, about half, just the current LMO. Second, the current LMO draft has sections related to how people apply for permits, penalties for the violators, guidelines for environmental protection, some number of rules and regulations that match requirements for any state or federal laws. Those areas have almost received no comment in any form I've seen, and will likely be a part of the new LMO as well. And they'll come from the old LMO, the one that's out there right now. So if less people comment on them, or we find reasons to change them, which is fine, we'll change them. But my point is, there's more there in that draft LMO than people think. They just focus on the one part. And I think the real heartburn over several sections of the current LMO draft are those that describe the actual zoning. So I'm, I'm happy with the planning commission starting over with those sections in particular, in any way, shape, or form they want to. They can start from the current zoning ordinances, which are part of the LMO right now. Or they can take the LMO and start whittling it away. Doesn't matter. Process is process. Whatever works for them to get what the citizens want in there, too. So my point is, I, I don't want people to be confused to say, ha, there is no more LMO. I'm going to bed and never getting up again, because I don't have to worry about it anymore. Because that's not the case. So, let me say it one other way. I don't think we can expect people to walk into these small group public meetings and comment on something that doesn't exist. I think they'll still have to tell us what they like or don't like in the proposed LMO draft, because that's a great way to determine what you do want or don't want. So I, I just think we need to think about that. And, and I also say, we might not should vote on this tonight, because if we do, the question remains, do we leave the current LMO draft up on the website? Because people need to see something to comment on. And if you say we're killing it tonight, what do they comment on? When they walk into these meetings? So, and, and how do we explain that to citizens without causing further confusion? So I just say, my personal belief is, let's let the planning commission go and let them handle it to this point.
The ball is in their court.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. So discussion is finished. Okay, good. All right, next item on the agenda is item number eight, a countywide broadband plan for Edgefield County. And I'm very appreciative of Councilwoman Kenyon for, and Councilwoman Ireland for serving on this kind of subcommittee. And they have had several meetings recently, and she's going to provide us an update on what's going on, Dr. Kenyon.
Ms. Ireland and I were appointed to county council to help develop a plan to provide high-speed broadband throughout the county. The first of the several meetings was held recently with Aiken Core and the Economic Development Partnership. We discussed an overall plan to provide broadband throughout the county over the next 30 months, starting later this summer. I met this week with Will Williams, Economic Development, and several old Tucker Miller, Aiken Core. Aiken Core, how would I say this? A plan on installing broadband in Edgefield County to all Aiken Core customers, starting later this year with a $99 installation fee, which will begin service into the house. This including your router. And what I mean by that, like now, for example, I am with Comcast, and I have to pay a router fee. So with this service, you do not have to pay the router fee. It would just automatically be $99. Carolina Connect, a South Carolina company, will supply the Wi-Fi service to the customers for $49.95 a month for 100 megabytes. They would be supplying this service for Aiken Core, Newberry and Mid Carolina Core. And what I mean by Aiken Core, prime example, I am on Dominion. I'm not Aiken Core. Crossed, crossed from where I live at in Trenton, Aiken Core, well, I'm Dominion. So I'm probably going to end up have to pay. Let's, let's, let's define it. They hope to cover the entire county by the end of 2023 with a total investment of up to $27 million. The county needs to determine if any Dominion Energy Territories need broadband from Aiken Core. Many of these areas may already have accurate broadband from a current provider. Since these are non-Aiken Core areas, the county may need to provide funding for these lines. We hope to have any agreement finalized by the end of the summer or early fall. We anticipate several more meetings with Aiken Core over the next few months, with myself and Tiffany. Tiffany and I hope to get together again with Will Williams and the Aiken Core crew to get further information so that we can bring back to council. I think this is a great and exciting new venture. And the reason why I said that, because I work for Edgefield County School District, and I did not know so many students, students need the Wi-Fi service special. Mr. Talbert District and Tiffany, this, that's on the west side. And even when Edgefield County provided the buses to, for the students to have Wi-Fi, you know, having the Wi-Fi on the bus, that still did not do any justice. Many students today, they have to come to the school, some of them even on the weekends, in the parking lot, just to do their homework, and I don't think that's fair. We've been pushed for this, pushed for this here, broadband and Mr. Will Williams over economic, our very own Economic Development Partnership. When I say CEO, but anyway, he provided, he made a way for this to, some kind of way happen. And we really, really, I personally want to thank him from the bottom of my heart, because what this going to do for our county, a lot. And I see some constituents shaking their head, because she, someone work for Edgefield County School District, just like I do. You know, she understand, we been needed this here. Like I say, I'm on one side of the road, my, my relatives, my relatives on the other side. I'm just one fortune, you know? I have the Wi-Fi, but right across the road, they don't have anything. And some, some people in the area of Johnston, I know wherever, you know, the way that their house sit, some can have, some have Wi-Fi in the kitchen area. But in the bedroom area, they don't have nothing, they probably have to stand outside on the porch and balance themselves, you know? I have seen, I have heard all sort of stories. But again, I would like to thank Mr. Will for bending over, going a extra mile of the way to bring broadband to Edgefield County. And I must say again, I'm on Dominion. But if there's a way that I can get hooked up to Aiken Core, I'm going for it.
Thank you. Did anyone have any comments for, or questions for Dr. Kenyon? I, I just want to add, you know, it's interesting, we have both, we have easements through our property for both Dominion and Aiken Electric. But if I told you how much we had to pay to get internet in our house, it, it would boggle your mind. So this is a great, great step. So thank you for your effort, and thank you for Tiffany Ireland as well.
I don't know if Mr. Roger want to help me out. I couldn't get into figuring, I couldn't get into all of that. He went over my head, but he bringing me back, you know?
Good job.
I don't know if you want to bring Will up to speak, Roger, I don't know.
The next, the next item on the agenda is consideration of approval of a marketing plan to promote the county's incentive zones to bring more attention to those commercial develop, um, commercial development incentives. And Dean Campbell has been working on that and has got a report for us on that. It's also Exhibit Eight.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I know the hour's getting late, but I'll just ask for a little bit of patience here, so we can walk through this. And, and so I'm glad it's Will Williams' night, because I'm going to mention him here in my report, too. So congratulations, Will, it's a good night for you. I, I've been working with the Economic Development Partnership, specifically Will Williams and his marketing person. And for those who don't know, my background, education, experience, and current job all revolve around public relations and marketing, which is one reason I asked that we do something like this as a county. So the purpose of this marketing plan I'm bringing to council tonight is to promote incentive zones in Edgefield County and encourage commercial businesses inside and outside of Edgefield County to locate there. These are the incentive zones that are located around each of our three towns. The audience for the marketing includes stakeholders with influence in commercial and small business development and location. Also, this plan will target other groups that may be able to assist in recruiting businesses to these zones. The aim of the plan is less general public and more specific to those who can locate or utilize the incentive zones. Remember, council has already approved the incentives and the incentives in the incentive zone and the map. So we're just talking about the next logical step. Commercial businesses have to know about these zones to consider locating in them. The key messaging is really three things. Edgefield County is growing, creating more customers for commercial businesses. Number two, Generac Power Systems has just made a multi-million dollar investment in new manufacturing facility in Edgefield County, creating a minimum of 450 new jobs and submitting the growth that will continue to come to Edgefield County. And third, the incentive zones are located next to Johnston, Edgefield, and Trenton, and it gives new businesses locating there a strategic advantage by being closer to a defined set of potential customers. So I wanted to point out in this plan that there are five resources that needed to be properly executed through this plan. First, we need a marketing company with experience in promoting the plan, as I've just defined it, plus other suggestions council or staff wants to consider. Second, we need an Edgefield County staff person who would ensure that the plan is executed. Total time spent by that staff person should average less than a few hours per week, once everything is in place, but will likely require more time in the beginning as everything is being set up. Third, there'd be a staff member in the Economic Development Partnership team who can interface with our staff member as necessary to make sure everything's being done. Fourth, some financial investment on behalf of the county. And finally, we would have to create a dedicated simplified guide to the program, its requirements and step-by-step instructions, so that participants in the program understand it and also produce any supporting materials, like how businesses demonstrate meeting their benchmarks, who reviews these and keeps track of them, the standard application, the locating specific parcels of land that would make good starting points. All that would require an additional little bit of staff time. You all have a copy of the plan, so you can see all the other details I won't go through. Those are the highlights. All of this starts with having a marketing company in place by July 1, or as close to that date as possible. Funding to execute this plan is estimated by me and Will's group at about fifty thousand dollars. And all the cost can be paid from the Economic Development Fund, which is what this fund is for. So here's the bottom line. This is our opportunity to take advantage of the Generac momentum and show commercial businesses that we have predetermined areas where if they locate, it's a win for them, it's a win for our three towns, and it's a win for the county. Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have one, but I'll ask council first. Do you have any questions? Are there any companies in mind that you would solicit an RFP from?
None that I have in mind, no.
I mean, are you aware, how many companies are there that would do this for a county our size?
Don't know. That's what we have to find out.
So that would be the next step to explore, looking for a company?
Well, we're not going out and recruiting companies per se. We would certainly start out with a blanket way of attracting companies like through geofencing and certain advertisements and even specific emails to various and eccentric realtors who handle commercial and small businesses who look for locations for expansions and other things.
Will, can I ask Will a question? You know, when we talk about hiring a marketing company for one year, are you aware in your world of a couple of companies that would reply to such an RFP?
Yes, we have relationships, just, we aren't contracted with anyone, but there are several firms that can do that. And there's one that specifically focuses on smaller communities.
Thank you. Is there anything else that you would want to add to this presentation?
No, I think Mr. Campbell and Ms. Avery that works for me have done an outstanding job on this. It did start out a little rough around the edges, but we definitely have got something together. And obviously, these zones have been in place for a couple of years. But I think Mr. Campbell's correct. You know, we're trying to find several things to complement Generac right now from a retail standpoint. So this would certainly fit in well with that. And if you remember, last year, I was scheduled to go to Las Vegas to the shopping center show. I can't remember the actual technical name for it. But it got canceled, and we were gonna be out there talking to companies about coming to Edgefield. But, you know, like everything else, it was canceled, so.
They like counties like us. All right, are there any other comments or questions for Dean?
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, Mr. Administrator.
As far as finding companies, again, these incentive zones are set up in all the counties throughout the United States. You know, this is something that federal government. And so there's a number of firms that have already done this in other counties in South Carolina. But we'll be working very closely with Will on this. We have already identified Keisha Lloyd, Keisha Bryant is gonna go ahead and be our staff person that'll be working with this marketing firm. And then we'll be using Doc Hart to start identifying some of those parcels. So Mr. Campbell and I have already talked about that. I've already talked to Keisha and Doc about moving forward with this because we'd like to have something in place by the first of July so that we can get out there and get stuff up on our website and Facebook page, et cetera.
Any other comments or questions? The only additional comment that I have is just, and I know you spoke with Mr. Gilchrist from the African-American Chamber of Commerce. I know he's been instrumental statewide and nationwide in this. I would just encourage reaching out to him as well, but thank you for your effort. So I would entertain a motion to approve this plan, this marketing plan. Motion has been made by Vice Chairman Talbert, seconded by Dr. Kenyon, to approve a marketing plan to promote the county's incentive zones and to bring more attention to that commercial development incentive. Is there any further discussion? See none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask the question. So now that it's been approved, these funds would come out of the Economic Development Contingency Fund that we have? Okay, just wanted to make sure that we're taking out the correct funds.
Yep, and I think he's got that worded on there too. Okay, thank you. Next item is approval to purchase vehicles from the current bond reserves. And I'll ask our county administrator to discuss it.
We have three vehicles that we need to get purchased. One's for the building department, one's for the litter control officer. He currently is using an old vehicle that had more people coming from the jail. And so these would be community-type workers, be a crew cab. And the third vehicle was the coroner. The coroner's vehicle is gonna have some extra things put on it that only the coroner is gonna need. So that's where the equipment comes in. But all together, we'll be using the remainder of the funds from the current bond that we have. The rest of it will start coming out of the seven-hundred-thousand-dollar bond that you approved recently. So again, we're looking at the sixty-four thousand, four sixty-seven, twenty-three utilizing that fund. And the remaining of the ninety thousand, one sixty-seven would come out of the seven-hundred-thousand-dollar bond.
I have one question. So the sixty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars, that's the price for all three of the vehicles?
No, that's the money that's left over from the old bond. The ninety-some thousand dollars is what the cost is for the three vehicles and to outfit the vehicles. The only one that's being outfitted is the coroner. The other two are just, and they're all coming off a state contract.
Any other questions for the administrator, Mr. Campbell?
I just want to make sure I'm clear on this because when we had our budget workshop and our first reading of the budget, we had a different administrator sitting there. So I want to make, but Dana was here, of course. So I just want to make sure in that information that we approved in the first reading and of course, heard about and accepted at the budget workshop was, there were a list of vehicles that were gonna come out of the budget and a list of vehicles that were coming out of the bond. I just want to make sure that this matched up with what we've already approved.
The other vehicles we're gonna be getting later on are coming from a leasing program through the Sheriff's Department, and that's through Enterprise. And we're working through the paperwork right now. They have to do a credit check and a number of things to start that leasing program. But none of those vehicles will come till after July one.
But these are.
These are the ones we're ordering now.
July one?
Well, the leasing program.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of vehicles from the current, the three vehicles mentioned from the current bond reserves.
So movement's channel.
Motion's been made by Vice Chairman Talbert, and I will second it. Is there any further discussion? See none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, and that approval passes unanimously. Last item under new business is first reading of an ordinance to rezone certain property previously zoned General Agricultural Development GD in unzoned property located at Edgefield Road and Williams Road to PD Plan Development and approve the concept plan for said property's development. This is item Exhibit Number fourteen. I would ask the administrator if it's anything he would like to say.
The developer and the engineer are here tonight, so I'm gonna let them make most of the comment. But this is a rezoning. Again, it takes three readings. Because of the moratorium, they will not be able to start construction. But we're going through the process, going from the current zoning to this plan development. There's over seventy-seven acres. There is a variety of housing in there, walking trails and other things. The planning commission made some comments that are listed under the exhibit. But if you don't mind, I'll just let the developer answer any of your specific questions.
This is Williams Road?
No.
Yes, this is the one that, off, yeah, off of Williams at nineteen, I mean, twenty-five.
I'm gonna apologize to you gentlemen. If I would've really looked at, I didn't see it number eleven until tonight, I would've moved this to the beginning. We're sorry we made you wait for the whole.
It's been very interesting.
I'm Mark Gillem. I'm the Chief National Officer of Kroll &amp; Company, the developer. And we want to develop this property. I believe we have two hundred and two homes to go on this property. And it'll be, we estimated the sales price will be about fifty million dollars. So I think it'll generate a little money for you. And we'll probably invest about eight and a half million in the development side. We're planning, we're planning a variety of homes. I think we have a dog park, some walking trails, and a playground. We had one entrance off of twenty-five. And because of the codes, we had another entrance off Williams. But at the planning commission meeting, the residents of Williams didn't like that. So we were thankful, we just, we got the planning commission to approve just an emergency entrance on that because we didn't want the entrance there. So I think we're, I think we're in pretty good shape with the planning commission. We'll be happy to answer any questions. This is our engineer, David Banks.
Yeah, David Banks with Southern Partners. I've worked on the land planning part of this project. But we'd like to say that the plan has been presented to the planning commission. I mean, it meets the current ordinance as it is without going through the PD process. And it meets, I believe it meets your proposed ordinance, which is sound left on the table. You know, so we tried to incorporate what we think y'all want, but don't really know yet. So that's why we chose to go with the PD. Mark is about to make a large investment buying this property. We kind of need some. Just some assurances that you put this much money in, then all of a sudden, we can't do. He sells houses, and he wants to build houses. So I mean, I think, I think going with PD was the right decision to make with this property with the current climate in Edgefield. You know, we work with, we're working with the planning department. It's not your standard house, 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 house. You know, we've put some amenities, we got walking trails, we got twenty-five percent open space, which exceeds y'all's orders. We tried to work with the planning department and the planning commission, and hopefully y'all can help to make this better.
I have a couple of questions, but I'll open it up to my council members first. Anyone have any questions or comments? Dr. Kenyon, you go first.
So the emergency, if we decide to move it, so we coming off Highway twenty-five, am I right? Emergency would be on Williams Road, which we only gonna use during emergency.
It will be dated, yes, ma'am.
It will be dated, okay. So we are coming off Highway twenty-five and off Bays? Not Bays? Or just twenty-five? Yeah, uh-huh, I know what you're talking about. But so what, what would that do with the traffic? Because now, I know where you at, on Williams Road, I know. I was there. I'm looking at it visually. But just in the afternoon when the buses went back this way from twenty-five, I'm looking at a traffic jam somewhere. Either right around, I get out at three-thirty, somewhere about four-fifteen, four-thirty, we gonna have a bad traffic jam. And I know we full lane, I do. I'm just thinking, how could we not have a traffic? Because them buses, not even the buses, eighteen-wheelers coming up, coming from twenty-five and bearing off going to Bays or going straight now they at the light. Going back to the school because I think they have to take the buses back to the third, to the third one. Somewhere in there. You all from here?
Yes, I'm from Augusta.
Oh, you from Augusta, okay.
I worked in Trenton, and I was picking peaches, so.
All right, okay, so he know where I'm coming from?
Yeah, I do.
All right, I'm from Trenton. All of my life, I traveled twenty-five. But now, I'm living that, so we did change Williams Road, okay, to the emergency. That was fine because I saw the map when we was here, okay. But I'm just looking at the traffic jam, how we gonna avoid it? You don't want to say, okay, because we barely two hundred somehow, just that all the houses filled up, right? Even they gonna have problem going in. You see what I'm saying?
I don't think there'll be any problem.
You don't think it'll be a problem?
We're gonna have, DOT has requested us to build a D cell lane. So there'll be a lane in the median. You know, where right now is grass between divided, there'll be a twelve-foot lane, two hundred feet long for stacking for cars to wait to turn in so they're not backing cars up on Edgefield.
Because I think somebody, because things gonna probably want to see that, but I, I feel.
That'll be the first thing we do.
Okay.
I mean, it's part of, part of the initial DOT permit.
Okay. Well, I'm still saying that, I know what you're saying. You got, you gonna, you gonna make a road for them to go inside, okay. But they got still getting in there. They got still get to that road, okay. I live in Trenton, but I have constituents, they want to definitely see that.
Any other questions from council, Mr. Campbell?
So I'm still unclear on something. So if you met all our requirements without being a PD, why again would you want to be a PD?
I mean, we realize that Edgefield is, Edgefield County is in the process of changing the rules. But we need to be able to lock down as an investment, long-term investment. This is a five-year plan. We get in the first or second phase of this plan, well, you can't do anything for ninety days. But at that point, we can't move forward. And then he has to sell his property because you decide that you don't want this type of development anymore. He's bought the property, put all the infrastructure in. Because it's not cheap to start. We have to put in a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar investment. You know, it's the first thing we have to do. Got to get sewer to the property, we got water and sewer to the property, but we got to pay to get it. It's just a large investment and not have, be able to look five years in the future and to understand that, you know, we're not just throwing money away because the county decides not to, they want to go a different direction.
Of course, I'm assuming you realize that a PD means we could put more restrictions on you.
Yeah, we would like to know those upfront before we start making those large investments.
And what happens if the council, for instance, tonight says no to this? What happens? No to the PD?
Well, we have not purchased the property yet. So if we can't work out the plan like we've worked out, we just won't buy the property. It's just the way it is. We're not speculating.
I designed subdivision, he's built some.
Okay, my last question, last question. Would these two hundred and two homes be on less than a half acre lot?
Yes, yes, ma'am. We do have water and sewer. We will have twenty-five percent open space, which is left natural with putting walking trails. We provide amenities. So in today's market, people don't want to have to cut the grass. They want very minimal amount of work. They want to do things. I like cutting grass. That's what I do, but I live on a half-acre lot. But most people, especially younger people, don't want that. We're seeing that in every, everywhere. We're building it across the street in Copperfield. Have you seen Copperfield? You don't like ours, man? That's not, they're subdivision, they're building houses.
We're building in there, and those are, those are less than half acres.
A quarter acre.
It's been very successful. People are buying, people are buying.
That's true. That's the first time, probably, okay. But what happened ten or fifteen years from now, that these people move, right? And no, if they can't sell it, will the government buy their houses and turn them to Section Eight homes? Or? Will they last? See, I, you know.
I've been working for Kroll Company about thirty years.
Okay.
That's never happened.
Okay.
That's never happened. Every neighborhood we've ever built, the prices go up in there.
Okay.
We built Walnut Grove, which is right next to.
Yeah, I know where, mhm.
And we were in there building homes for under a hundred thousand. Those homes now are used. Those homes now are used homes. They're selling for well over two hundred thousand.
You can't keep them on the market.
The, the real estate market right now is, there's only a thousand, less than a thousand homes for sale in the Augusta area.
Right.
And in, in times past, there've been thirty-five hundred homes for sale. So, there's a, there's a great, you know, deficit in homes.
I, I have a couple of specific questions as it relates to the development. But I, I just want to say thank you for building homes. It's an honorable profession. You know, I, I'm so thankful that there are people that are craftsmen, that do good work i- in an industry where there's a huge demand. So, the two specific, I have a question, and I have two specific things that I would like to add back into the development if we were to approve it tonight. And maybe it's in here, and I just don't see it. And, and I know it might be a hard question to answer, the way building pricing, you know, the cost of lumber right now and everything else. What, what is the price point of these homes?
These homes will be from probably two hundred thousand or three hundred and thirty thousand. But if the lumber keeps going like that, it'll be high, like it's been going. I mean, a year ago, we were paying three dollars for a two-by-four stud. Now, we're paying fifteen dollars for it.
I, I have a friend that's building a home right now, and they're in the middle, and the, the price point has gone up by a third from when they began six months ago, so. Well, that was my question. So, two hundred, I'm assuming for the townhomes, and three-thirty for the single families? Okay. There were two things that were initially on your plan, I believe, and I could be incorrect. That I think would add a lot of value if we added them back in. One is putting hardy board on the front of the buildings. I think that would add maybe five thousand dollars per home approximately. Would add a lot of value. This is one thing I would ask that you would consider. And then the second one is, I know there was a lot at the end that was asked to be left open. So that there could be a potential connection next door if, if the next lot was developed. And I've seen that done well. I wondered if you would consider adding those two things back into this proposal.
Well, the hardy board is all the homes in near Copperfield, over in Sage Creek, in Gregory Landing, which is also in Edgefield County. We're building, we're doing all vinyl homes everywhere. And in Richmond County, we're doing vinyl. We're building in Effingham County, we're doing vinyl. In Chatham County, the, the fiber cement adds cost. But our buyers don't seem to want to pay for it, because it comes right out of the builder's margin. So, builders don't want to do it. I mean, we, you know, we got to make a profit to stay in business. So, we just don't, uh, we don't, we don't think, it's, it's hard to match up the two different materials as well. I mean, aesthetically, to have fiber cement on the front and vinyl on the side, I, I'm not sure. It almost looks like, it could look like. I mean, it, it, it's beauties in the eyes of the holder, right? You ran out of money, or why did you do that? So, it's.
What, what would be the cost to do it for the enti-? I was talking about on the front. What would be the cost difference to do the whole building that size?
Oh, just shoot, you're adding, on a two-story home, you're adding fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to do the fiber cement. Because, uh, because of the price of the material, and you have to paint it. And then you have to maintain it more than you do vinyl, because with vinyl, you can pressure wash it, you know, once a year or whenever you need to. With the fiber cement, you're gonna have to paint it. And depending on what colors you use, if you use a bright color, you may have to paint it every five years. And homeowners are gonna be shocked when they learn how much that, that costs to repaint a home. So, I, I think for this particular market segment, I think vinyl works better. I think the fiber cement is, for custom homes, is, is really nice, where you have folks who are willing to pay for the fiber cement.
Do you, do you provide that as an option?
Well, yeah, we provide it. It's never been chosen. I mean, there are certain things that, that we, nobody's ever asked, asked for. One thing, another thing, I love trees. I got a lot of trees. I plant a lot of trees in my house, and we're gonna put trees in this neighborhood as well. But I've never had a customer who comes to us and say, how about planting me some trees? It's never, it's just never happened. Uh, they want to spend their money somewhere where they will see it and appreciate it and, and like it. So, you know, the, the women will want to put in, instead of put in, we put granite in all our homes, in the kitchen. But, you know, women like quartz now, so they'll want to upgrade to that, or they'll put, we'll put blinds in. We may put some fancier flooring, and that's where people want to spend their money. People don't come and say, I want fiber cement, or I want trees, and that's just what we see.
Well, thanks for that education. What about the lot? The, the lot that was suggested being left in there so that it could potentially connect either a bike path or.
Property owners, next, it was a variety of property owners, and we just didn't see the feasibility of putting all that property together and being able to use it. So, it gets stubbed out to, it gets stubbed out, but it's a variety of property owners that made it, would make it very difficult to ever actually use it and put that deal together.
Do you consider leaving that lot to sea? It's one lot.
We would, for time, yeah, certainly.
Those are my questions, and, and again, I appreciate you being here. Any other questions or comments from, Mr. Administrator?
I, I'd like to ask a question, probably of you, David. If you can get a little closer to the mic, so we can pick you up. Concerning your, your traffic that Dr. Kenyon had asked earlier. So, as you're turning left bound into the development.
Yes.
You said you'll have a left-hand turn lane.
Yes.
And how long is that gonna be for storage?
I believe it's a, I believe they told me a hundred and fifty or two hundred feet of storage.
So, about six or seven vehicles could stack up in there?
Two hundred feet, you get, each car twenty, I mean.
Was that including the taper, or is that?
That'd be excluding the taper.
Okay. Are you gonna have a right turn lane into the development?
Right-hand turn lane. Typically, we don't.
A de-acceleration lane going in there?
Typically, we don't. Probably would not in this situation because of the, the, the location, they've been next to Williams. And they would, that would conflict with that.
And, and have you looked at a split as to where the traffic's gonna be going towards Betis or going back towards I twenty?
At this point, we've not, we've not done any traffic analysis.
Okay.
I mean, we were trying to, gotta see what's gonna go with the county, and, and at that point, we just.
Because I, I see you, you're projecting about a thousand seven hundred vehicles per day leaving the development. I think it's one-seven-two-two.
Okay.
To be exact. So, you don't know how many are be turning right and how many are gonna be turning left?
We'll have two extra lanes, so that we would, and we would allow.
So, you'd have a right turn lane and a left turn lane going out? I guess, without further analysis, my concern is the, the ones that are leaving the development and turning left have to cross two lanes of traffic and the median to get out. And what is the number of vehicles that are gonna be turning left versus turning right towards Betis Academy?
I would have to, I would, I've not, I've not looked at that. I mean, I know the area. I know a lot of people go to the Royal Plant, go in that direction. But I just have, I haven't had a chance to look at that.
Okay. Is that something you could determine?
Yeah, we can determine that. We're gonna have to get some traffic counts out there and see directionally. I mean, I have, I have total volumes of homes.
Yeah, and it's, I'm not concerned about the traffic that's currently out there, but of that seventeen-twenty-two, is it gonna be forty percent going to the right, sixty percent left? Or, you know, what, what is the projection is, you know, looking at the origin destination plan for those?
Question, I just don't have answers.
Okay. If you could go ahead and take a look at that, and I, I'd appreciate seeing that. And I think it might help Dr. Kenyon a little bit more also as to what we may or may not have.
And DOT may have those internal numbers that they just don't post on the website.
Yeah, I, I'm sure they know what the traffic volume is on that road, twenty-five, and northbound, southbound. And I, I assume that during the peak hour, we're looking at around ten percent of that, seventeen-twenty-two?
Yeah, I have.
Again, if you could just give, if you could give me a little more detail on that.
You asked the question before I had, as many as I could, but I just.
It's just when she asked the question, it just kind of brought forward a lot of thoughts in my mind as to the traffic trying to cross all those lanes. And how are they gonna stack up if all of a sudden they, they cross the first two lanes, and then they can't cross the next, get into it?
Do you have a median cut to the right, and you have Betis Academy?
Yeah, and, and.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I, basically.
I, I could see them getting across the two lanes and then the median, which allows you maybe one or two cars to, to turn left. And I didn't even know if you needed to have like an acceleration lane?
Typically, they don't, they frown on those. It's more the deceleration lane and left turn. Turn lanes in and out.
If you could get a little further information. Thank you.
That's my question.
And I just thought of one additional question that maybe you would have for second reading that this should pass tonight is, um, what, what, what kind of landscaping are you gonna do along twenty-five in front of the townhomes? Townhomes are, it's the back end of the townhomes that are be visible, right, on twenty-five?
Yeah, that, we're, um, presently, there's a power line running across the property that's gonna be relocated to the front, to the, to the right of way. Not in the right of way, but, and they're gonna take up the first thirty feet, and they're gonna clear that thirty feet. But we're also setting aside a, I think it's a forty-foot buffer, thirty or forty, I can, I'll be able to tell you. We have a buffer between that. It's gonna be landscaped, either landscaped or natural. There's, there's planted paths. We'll see what that does. And, you know, we may have to intersperse with some lower-growth stuff.
I think it would be nice to have a visual of what you're thinking about doing there.
Okay.
Couple of examples, so. But we appreciate you being here. Did you have one more question?
I have my nickel back. I have one, one more question. I'm sorry. The, um, I'm just curious, given the size of lots, what would your reaction be if the county council asked you if you could make them all one acre or larger? What would your reaction be?
We wouldn't be interested in that, Rob.
Any other questions? Okay. We are grateful that you're here. Thank you. So, I would entertain a motion to approve first reading of an ordinance to rezone certain previously zoned general agriculture development and unzoned property located Edgefield Road and Williams Road to planned development. And approve the concept plan for said property's development. And I will make the motion.
I'll second it for reasons of discussion.
Is there any further discuss, or, it's been made by myself, seconded by you, and now we'll open it up for discussion.
So, I was just gonna say that, you know, this is just first reading. I think we ought to at least give it to second reading, or maybe even third, and let's just get some more information from these guys before we make a decision. Because we had nothing to lose by giving it first reading tonight. We'd like to see what they might can do, and now they've heard some of our questions, they may go back and sharpen their pencil and come back with something a little different, who knows?
That's true.
Very good. Any other comments from council?
I have no account.
See none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, and that passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is comments from the public on anything that's not on the agenda. I know I've got two. Are there any additional?
There is none.
Okay. I've got two individuals in, did they, is Mr. Willie Sprouse still here? All right, and Mr. Michael McCoy? They also left. All right, well, we will call them, see what they had to say. The next item on the agenda is reports from our county administrator.
I'll try to keep this brief, but I do have a, a number of items to mention to you. This is the tax reassessment year. Last time the taxes went through reassessment was in twenty-seventeen. I bring that to council's attention, because the notices will be sent to all the residents later this month. So, you may start getting calls saying, hey, I got this notice here. That's not their tax bill. This is just telling them this is what the property is being reassessed for. Most of the property has seen a five to ten percent increase. The maximum by state law is fifteen percent, that a property could go up in value. Typically, what council will do is, once the notices go out, then there's a time to appeal to the assessor. So, if some citizen says, I, I just don't agree with this, have them talk to the assessor. So, you know, have them talk to Jerry or one of his staff members. If for some reason they can't work out why this property has gone up in value, then there's always the appeals board that they could go to. In August, so they have ninety days to appeal it, and then in August, we'll sit down as a staff, Dana, myself, Bill Gilchrist, Jerry Coleman. And we'll look at what should the new millage be? And we would then bring that back to council in September. You'll vote on it. More than likely, our millage will go down. Currently, our millage is at seventy-four point nine. It used to be at eighty-two point nine, but then the hospital and the recreation was taken out of there. So, then you would take a look at that value. According to state law, we can't, everything's gotta be revenue neutral. Unless you wanted to theoretically raise taxes or raise the millage up. And you could only do that by, based on population growth or based on what the CPI over the last three years has been, the Consumer Price Index. But we'll bring, bring something to you in September. You'll vote on it, and then Mr. Gilchrist could go ahead and send out all the bills. But I wanted you to know this, so that if you start getting calls, this is what's happening. That, don't let anybody say, oh, my gosh, I'm late on my taxes, or what's this tax bill so early in the year, or anything else. But everybody will be getting that notice. Any questions on that? Second item is convenience centers. Gotten some complaints or issues concerning our convenience centers. The complaint concerning the convenience centers is, I know that person bringing their garbage here doesn't live in Edgefield County. I'm sure you've never heard this before. You know, so what do we do about that? We have a litter control officer whose job is to make sure that our, if somebody dumps an area, they check out to see if there's any addresses and then makes a, a charge against them. But since we have this litter control officer, what I'm gonna recommend, unless council has some thoughts otherwise, is that we post signs at the convenience center, something to the effect that Edgefield County use only, or only used by citizens of Edgefield County. To let people know that, you know, they should know, but just in case somebody comes in there from Aiken County, not say Aiken County does it. They would know that's for Edgefield County only. Then we would have the litter control officer randomly going at each of the convenience centers and just stopping some people and asking, where do you live? And that, again, may spend an hour or two, probably more so, at US twenty-five, because that seems to be the area where we get most of the complaints, but other areas. Just to go ahead and check that out. If we do that, the only problem that I see is I can't find anything in here that says if somebody is a repeat offender. So, in other words, the first time is a verbal warning, the second time's a written warning. We don't have anything that says we could charge them. So, if we're gonna do this, we need to develop an ordinance that says the litter control officer could charge them, and there'd be a fine or an assessment of such and such.
We used to, I used to have a neon sticker.
The, the problem was that people sell their cars, and they don't have stickers now, and the car gets transferred to somebody else, and they're in different county. Stickers work, and we could go back to stickers if you want, but there are inherent problems with stickers. So, there's no right or wrong way of doing this. This is a way of trying to answer some of the complaints that we have had. And if you want us to try it, we're willing to go ahead and try putting up signs and then having our litter control officer go by and talk to people.
Well, Roger, I don't, um, we, we had discussed one before.
Couple of years ago, we, we discussed this.
It's cycles.
Huh?
It's recycling.
Okay, I was just wondering, because I know up on, up on three-seventy-eight, McCumming County and Edgefield, and that, you can't hardly tell where that county runs it in there. Because I live right at the end of that county. I don't know, about like Jackie said, we did have stickers years ago, but.
And did they run out of stickers? Can they go?
I don't know.
The McCormick Center. We voted to eliminate the stickers, actually, a couple of years ago, because I know there are constituents. I know there are constituents on your end of the county that actually do their trash in McCormick on certain days.
Right, right.
Just like there's people coming into Edgefield County.
And that is a joint center up there, if I recall correctly, where McCormick pays us a certain amount of money to keep that thing in operation.
That's right, that's correct.
And, uh, it was, I think, getting confrontational, the stickers was causing the folks on my end of the county to get confrontational with some residents, and some didn't like hat, being responsible for that confrontation. And some actually want to have that confrontation. So, personally, I'm not opposed to having the signs and having the litter control officer, uh, and doing an ordinance. I think it's a great first step, but I don't know if there's any other.
So what happened if the litter office, officer is in Edgefield and we have all this animosity in Trenton? Can he rush from Edgefield to Trenton? I don't know, on this, you know, we have, we have the sheriff here, maybe he can help us.
Again, this is a.
He can yell us out.
This, the convenience centers, and like I said, there's no right or wrong way of doing this.
Right.
Just trying to find, I'm sure there are a number of people in Edgefield that maybe work in the Aiken County area, that do the same thing and dropping things off in Aiken County. Uh-oh, we saw a hand there, I don't wanna see it. But there's probably more people in Aiken County, population wise, there's over a hundred and sixty thousand, there's only twenty-seven thousand here. So there's the chance of more people coming across, and it's with generic, it's an issue, it's not a great issue, but I'm just looking at potential solutions. Doc and I have talked about, I've talked to a couple of other people about this. This is one way of maybe trying to answer some of those questions.
You know, do you, have you ever thought about, you know, the convention center? Okay, it's open Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Well, Tuesday and Thursday is our biggest problem in Trenton, that's why we just adopt a highway. When you ask, you know, I'm not saying the older you get, but sometime I personally forget, oh, my God, I got all this trash, and the day is Tuesday, right? So now I'm taking the trash on the back of the truck to Thurman. Well, if it's not, my husband and tire good, I gotta pick up the trash. So do you think it's possible to have the convention center open every day? Would that eliminate some of the trash and chairs beside the road and tires? I'm just asking a question.
I didn't mean to open up a whole. Issue here, and we could talk more about it. I'm just a new guy here, remember? I'm supposed to be on my honeymoon for the first month or two.
Your honeymoon has been canceled.
I know, I can see that already. I mean, I'm, I'm certainly open to those suggestions, it's a matter of money. For every day extra that we have it open, we just have to pay someone to be there. The amount of material that we're gonna get there is probably not gonna increase, it's just paying. And you, these are all basically senior workers that we have.
Right.
That, uh, we hire. And, but, I mean, it's, it's just, how much more money do we wanna spend to keep it open? And I'm open to a discussion on that, maybe at another.
Right.
Time.
Budget meeting. But as, as far as your report tonight, you were asking, how do we feel about putting signs up?
Right.
And letting the.
If I hear nothing, then I probably won't do anything, but if I hear kind of shaking the heads, then I'll go ahead and get some signs, some, uh, some renderings of what a sign could look like, and then I could send them all to you under, and, and you could all say yea or nay, or whatever you like to do, and then we'll just have the litter control officer, uh, start making some random checks.
Anyone opposed to that?
I like, I like the idea, it's, it's, you know, it's only so much you can do out there, probably, at least that's a step.
I'm not gonna have a person there all the time. You know, at one, we even thought about, should the, uh, workers there be asking every car that comes up and say, hey, where do you live? But I don't wanna get intrusive in people's lives, uh, that's not the idea. Uh, hopefully the signs will take care of a portion of this problem. Next issue.
Yes, sir.
Social media. We briefly talked about that, uh, earlier, about social media, and there's an awful lot of social media out there. Um, I know some people are on Facebook all the time, my wife included. You know, and we thought about, I, in talking to Doc Hart, uh, the building official, uh, he's been designated as our information officer, trying to get some information, and, and he'll go on the sites and look at it, and if somebody says, hey, I got a pothole, what do I do about it? And he'll shoot back a message, say, if it's an SCDOT, call this, if it's county, call this number, and that kinda thing. But with everything that's gone on with the planning commission and the LMOs and the moratorium and all these other things, there's this, a lot, it's ramping up. Like to make another suggestion, uh, since you've thought so favorably on the convenience centers. What if, and, and I don't want him to be posting for every comment that's out there. Because I, I have two son-in-laws, one's very liberal, one's very conservative, and they get into these discussions, and at the end of the day, neither one's right and neither one's wrong, and they both wind up almost disliking one another. And, and so, it's a no-win situation when you start trying to justify or putting out different facts. But I think, once a month, maybe a couple of times a month, for him to have, uh, Doc's remedies or Doc's top three or five or whatever, and put out information that I think could be very valuable, uh, and putting it on our website, uh, could help us. If we do that, I'd like to have a council member or two, I, I know that Tiffany, she's obviously has worked for the advertiser for decades, or at least seems like it. I know that's your job, uh, is, is putting out information. And before he would put that information out, I have it run by one or two council members, or all of councilmembers, and saying, this is what we're gonna put out as a county, um, and it's gonna be kinda like issues and updates of what's going on. And if you are okay with that, I talked to Doc, he's willing to do that. Um, but I don't wanna do that without at least seeing some heads go up and down.
I have a couple of comments, but let me offer to the rest of council first, anyone have any questions or comments about that?
Well, I mean, in theory, it's a good idea, but let me drill down just a second. So, first, I, I just personally, probably all of council will have a shot at seeing what's gonna go up.
Yeah, so we can send it to everybody.
If you have one or two of us involved in something, I mean, all of us need to approve it, I think. And the other part is, I think if we do this, and Doc is putting something up there, it can't be volumes.
No.
You know, it has to be short, understandable, I'll call them nuggets, if you wanna call it that, you know? And that's hard to do in some of his world, when you got zoning and all those things, so it's, it's, if he can do it, that'd be great, and we'd have to work on that, but I just think we need to make sure it's answering what I'll call the right questions. For instance, I wouldn't wanna hear him talking about, I'll make something up, trees that don't grow here versus something in the LMO that people need to know. You know, that kinda thing, so that would be my thing. I wouldn't wanna be a, a throwaway piece, where people say, that's a waste of my time to look at that, is all I would say.
And then, like Mr. Rogers said, it's then we have to come to us, right?
Right. Yes, yes. I want you to make sure the verbiage and what he's saying is what's, again, I, I look at my tenure here as not being here for a real long length of time, so whoever this next administrator is, it's, you know, it still needs to funnel through council. And, uh, but once you gave the okay, then he would post it on the website and it'd be out there as information.
So my only comment is, I, I really like the idea of posting it to a website and driving people to the website, so that it will boost our SEO, our algorithms for our website. I, I think that's fantastic, and I think what you said, brief, and, and maybe once a week.
Red to the point, yeah.
Once a week, or every other week, or, those are my two comments.
Yeah, it might be once a month, it might be twice a month, uh, we're just not gonna start putting stuff out there to make stuff up, just because to do it.
Well, and the other piece of that is, you talk, you started with social media, I think people would pick it up and some would put it on social media.
And that's fine.
Well, I think that's what he would do, is he would post the link on social media, driving people to the website, right?
Well, I was just the opposite, putting it on the website, and then people could also grab it and put it on social media if they wanted to.
Right. Either way, it gets there.
Gotcha. Yeah. Um, again, I'm trying to be very brief here, just wanted to make a, a, to let you know that we had three employees that went through an extensive, uh, course, uh, there's, uh, four different segments of it. Garrett Lynn, Doc Hart, and Dana Waters, it's, it's a leadership, uh, academy, that everything was online, and they, um, all graduated, uh, got a certificate, and so I'd just like to recognize employees that try to go the extra mile for leadership training. So, get a chance, congratulate one or all three of them. There's one right now, you could congratulate the other ones later. And that, uh, two, two more items, I'll get, save the, the last one in a moment. Small groups, just to know, we, we are moving forward to small groups. I thought the one I attended went well, uh, I understand this second one went even better, uh, because I wasn't there. And, starting next week, we're really gearing up. On the tenth, we're gonna be meeting with a group off of Sweetwater Road primarily, in Scotts District. On the eleventh, we're going, uh, to District Three, Dean's District. To be determined, um, on maybe the twelfth or the following week, uh, in District Four. Uh, the seventeenth, we're gonna be up in District One. We have enough people that we're gonna have to probably have two, maybe three meetings, they're very active up there. So, that, uh, we know we'll do it on the seventeenth, with those meetings, so far have been, like, at six o'clock. We're going to District One at seven, because people get home a little later, they have to a little further distance to go. Uh, but we, we'll be having some on the seventeenth. So, District Four, we'll either do one next week or the week of the seventeenth. Um, and then I talked to Tiffany today, uh, she's obviously not here tonight. The recovery's taking a little longer than she had anticipated, that's why she didn't even call in, because she just didn't feel up to it. Uh, we're hoping to do it on the twenty-fourth, but if not, as I told her, I said, if we have to go another week later, on the week of the thirty-first or first week in June, uh, we'll do that. But we're hoping on finishing all this up the first week in June. Then Kevin will take all this information that we're gathering, you know, fifteen, twenty meetings, try to pull it together. Uh, we have commissioners from the planning commission that are, are at all these meetings. They'll assimilate this and try to go ahead and talk about it at their June meeting, with the, again, the idea that July, August, September, moving forward to changing our current ordinances to something that people could say, yay, so, this is what we're looking for, and then getting it back to council. So is that plan still okay with everybody? Good. The last thing is the sheriff. We talked about this at the very beginning of the meeting, um, and before we get into what we talked about the last meeting, I did wanna make one comment. I've been working with our sheriff, and one of the things I hate is when we have a bunch of vehicles just sitting around that don't run, and they're just, in, I think it was twenty-eleven, we, we went ahead and had our first auction with GovDeals, and we got over, it's like seventy, eighty thousand dollars. We identified eight vehicles that really just don't have any value, and we're gonna send it to be crushed. So brewers or someone's gonna get some crushed vehicles, I mean, these are scavenger vehicles, they're like Frankenstein, you know, they're just a little piece off here and there. And then we got, uh, thirteen vehicles that were ready to sell. And, two things, once you sell them, we don't have to insure them anymore. And insurance found a vehicle is like seven, eight hundred dollars. So we want to get these moved off, get rid of them, make some money for the county, then take them off our insurance roll. So it's, I really appreciate him working with us, uh, and getting that started. Last thing is, um, at the last meeting, you asked us to go ahead and to start a study. We had a great conversation, uh, we have authorized them to start the study, I'm not even too sure how far along they are on it, probably just at the very beginning. But then, I got today, uh, letters from, uh, all three sheriffs, our sheriff, Saluda County Sheriff, and McCormick Sheriff, all saying they are satisfied with what they have, they are not looking on doing a law enforcement center with other counties. I wanted to talk about this and to, hopefully, for you all to say, if that's the case, then don't go forward with the study, because I don't wanna spend the county's money, we're talking about close to twenty thousand dollars for the study, if we don't have to do it, if end results are gonna be the sheriffs don't wanna do it anyways. So, right now, unless I hear otherwise, we're gonna continue with that study, and we'll make a report June one. But you have in front of you those, those letters from the sheriff, I'm sorry you're getting them so late, but I, I didn't get them till today. So we're, we're moving forward unless you tell us otherwise not to move forward with the study.
I do have comments, but I'll allow my council members to see, share what they might have first, if anybody. Well, I would just say, my preference would be to not invest the money in a study, based on what we have here and what, what we had decided previously to this study being recommended. That's my two cents, but if we wanna continue down this road, we can do that as well.
Well, I would like to inter, interject that, um, I'm very conservative in coming down to saving taxpayers' money. And I feel that, I think it'd be a waste of taxpayer money to go and have a study. And the three sheriffs don't, uh, they're not willing to have a tri-count of jail. So that's my point, I would, I would definitely think we'd be wasting money, our taxpayer money.
Any other comments?
I guess my only comment would be, since I've asked for the study, is that, um, I too don't wanna waste money on something we don't need.
Right.
But, I'm a little disappointed that it showed up on our desk tonight when we walked in, that's the first I had seen or heard, I haven't even read the letters. I, I take your word for it, because it's right here, but I haven't read them, because I walked in and we started the meeting. So I still haven't read them, so, you know, um, and I know you can't produce something you don't have until you get it, so, so I guess what I'm saying is, if it's, if it's, if that's checkmate, then the game's over. That sounds like checkmate to me.
I get it, it's not a game of chess, and this is not to checkmate or not, it's just, I, I just need direction, is all I'm, I'm looking for, and I, I think we all knew that the chance of us having a joint center, uh, was probably unlikely, but we were gonna go ahead and look any ways to make sure, uh, knowing that unless we got cooperation from the other sheriffs, it wasn't gonna happen. So, I believe the sheriff who's here, you wanna say something? And if you do, would you please come to, we wanna pick you up this time.
Put you on the spot.
I'm gonna have to answer any question, my, my letter. My letter to you is, is a, a summary, some, somewhat. Sheriff Sterns opted out early on, even, even before I took office. So that left him out completely. Uh, Mr. Cooper, Mr. Strawberry from Saluda, and Sheriff Price and I kind of carried the torch forward. I did look and talk to sheriffs of Lee and Sumter County, who had went together to do this, and Orangeburg, Calhoun. Lee Sumter failed, just a few years after it got going. Leaving the jail to be operated by the larger county, Sumter County, uh, leaves completely out of it. And then the bad thing is, which is exactly what we would be talking about, the jail is so far away from the sheriff's office and away from Sumter. Sheriff's traveling twenty-five miles to, uh, to the jail ev- every time. In, uh, Orangeburg, Calhoun, similar, uh, not so much that it failed, but Calhoun just could not keep their end of the bargain early on. Orangeburg then built a fantastic jail, uh, if there is such a thing. Uh, really impressive, uh, arrangement there, and Calhoun simply pays a set fee every year, every month. I, I feel that's where we would be one day. I feel that's where we would be one day, and then we would have lost the opportunity to have the jail here in, in Edgefield. Sheriff Price and I agree that we don't want to do it, he wants to improve his jail in Saluda. And of course, we, we on the other hand have to start from scratch. So not only would our local option sales tax money have to go into building a joint jail with Saluda in Johnston on one, off of 121, but we would also have to have additional monies to come back and build a sheriff's office. Probably a combination with the magistrate's office or EMS or anybody else, I've always been open to that. But we, we'll be spending in two pots of money and not one. I think we'd be better served, I think the county would be better served with a centrally located jail here in Edgefield. And I know I told you all this last month, but I, it, it is my constitutional duty to operate the jail. I think I was elected to do that, and I, I think the, the vote that was cast was to build our own jail. I don't, I don't think it was cast to, to put a joint jail in place. That's my view, and I'm happy to answer any, any question.
I, I have a question for you, this is the first occasion where it's not an agenda item, it's not on old business or new business. Can, can we make a motion, if it's not on the agenda, to table the study or to do anything if it's not on the agenda?
I think that we can make the motion.
Okay.
Our discussion is, go ahead.
State law says that you could add or delete items from the agenda, but it has to be, if it's not posted and it's not on the agenda, you have to take a vote. And it's a super majority, so three out of the four of you would have to say, yes, we're going to go ahead and put this on the agenda. As long as it's not looking at something that's going to be adding a fee or, or revenue or anything of this nature or an ordinance type change, that, that would be allowable. But it has to be a vote, not, in this case, three of the four of you or that's seventy-five percent.
Well, I make a motion that we amend the agenda to put this on the agenda to vote whether or not we want to continue with the study.
What's that?
Motion to add this to the agenda has been made by myself, seconded by Vice Chairman Talbert, is there any discussion?
I thought we already had this vote.
Well.
We had it three hours ago.
We did.
And I don't know, so I think it's not, I think it's out of order.
So if, if, that's fine, I, that's why I asked the question, if, if anyone was willing to, so it's been made and seconded.
It's out of order.
Yeah, it's already been, it's already been on the agenda.
It's already been voted on?
Yeah, he does have a point, it's already been voted on.
All right, so we'll bring it back up at our next meeting.
So as a point of discussion, just for my education, let's don't spend twenty-one thousand dollars in the next four weeks here. Can we come up with some gentleman's agreement or some instruction to Mosley to stop, to hold, to kick it into neutral until we decide what we're going to do?
I think that's easy to do, we, we do that all the time. So I think that, and I'll, the attorney and the administrator can weigh in. You know, the administrator's report, we didn't vote on signs and all that for the litter control and all that. You don't always vote on things, you do it by consensus too, and so we just asked that a study be done. And this is the study, so I don't know what else needs to be done, there's no, we're not going to move to do a joint jail. So there's no motion to make in my opinion.
So you're in agreement in pausing the study for the, for, for the time period between now and our next meeting?
What I heard from you all when I brought this up under the administrator report was that not to continue with it.
So you, my question to Mr. Campbell is, you're in agreement to discontinue having Mosley do any work until our next meeting?
Yeah, I don't think they need to do any more work.
Okay, is there anyone in?
Again, period.
Well, at the, at the next meeting.
Next meeting, it'll be on the agenda.
Right now it's just a comma.
At, at the next meeting, I will be bringing up two items then. One is to ask permission from you all, this is what I did at the last meeting, to move forward with Mosley or some other firm to do a land study so that we can start looking at potential land for this facility. And then to allow us to move forward to start the process to hire an architect to start the actual drawings for the facility. So that's, that's kind of like the next step. So the first thing is you do an RFQ, you know, get qualifications, and you, and that may not even be necessary because this is so there's not a lot of people that do this kind of work for jails. So we get proposals, we have the committee go ahead and select an architect, and then meanwhile, we're doing a site analysis. So that's, that's the next process, and then the third thing is going ahead and getting the bonding started and starting the nonprofit that we want to develop for the law enforcement center. And I'll, I'll have that at the next meeting for your all's approval.
Perfect.
That's good.
Thank you, thank you Sheriff. Anything else on your report, sir?
I probably will not have a report next month.
Somehow, I don't believe it. All right, well, thank you, we appreciate it, I just have really three quick things, four actually. One, I got a letter from Carlos Melanis, our CEO of the Edgefield County Hospital, and I just think this is really exciting news, I've already shared it with county council, but I, I want to share it with everyone. You know, in 2015, we were in a tough spot as it relates to the hospital, we didn't know if we were going to survive, to be candidly, to be candid. And we got notification that of the fourteen hundred critical access hospitals in the nation, Edgefield County is in the top twenty. And this was rated by the National Rural Health Association, and Edgefield County Hospital will be receiving an award at their annual conference in Kansas City on September 24th. So out of fourteen hundred rural access hospitals, we're in the top twenty. That is great. So congratulations to everybody that works at the county hospital. The second thing I just wanted to share is, the first two small group meetings that were held were at my, were in my district. They were fantastic, they were very good, they were very productive. And I think tonight, we, we talked a little bit about what is the starting point of these meetings, you know, is it the existing ordinances, of which there are many, that we want to look at? Or is it a draft, which is a draft? And I would encourage both, I would encourage all citizens to look at both. Obviously, as we look at tonight, what was on the agenda, we, we, we need to make some adjustments, and that's what will happen over the course of the next decade. I did want to mention, I'm aware that some constituents visited the Upper Savannah Council of Governments on behalf of, of Edgefield County and looking to see what they could do to help us, and we had already in our meeting after the last planning commission had talked about bringing Rick Green here to do some continuing education as it relates to planning. Our planning commission members are required to do continuing education annually and, so that they know what is legal and what is not. And our discussion prior to, to their visit was to do that three-hour session at some point, they have a pretty heavy agenda right now. But, but livestream it so that the citizens are aware of what their roles and responsibilities are as well. And that's a three-hour course which will be scheduled at some point.
It's mandatory once a year, once a year.
Yeah, by them, so, and, and again, this course talks about legally what they can and cannot do. And I, I want to make it available to the, to the public, to, to be aware, as, the public that wants to be aware, they can watch it. So, and then the final thing is, we have gotten several resumes for a potential administrator. You have, each of you have that packet, and I'll be contacting you in the next week or so to schedule a special call meeting just to review those together. And that is all that I have, unless you have a question or comment, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Does it move?
What's that?
Motion has been made by Councilman Campbell, seconded by Dr. Kenyon, is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right, thank you, y'all have a blessed night.